Mr. Jim and Angela.
Here.
Mr. Jim.
Here.
Mrs. Wolford.
Here.
Mr. Scupora.
Here.
Mr. Baldmieri. Mr. Forish.
Here.
Mayor Griffin. Present. Six present. Approval minutes from April ninth, two thousand twelve. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the minutes of the April ninth, two thousand and twelve meeting be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of fiscal department reports and pay bills for the month of April two thousand twelve. May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Wolford, second.
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forrest, all in favor?
Madam Mayor. I have a question concerning the earned income tax delinquent. One point three one oh, point two three oh is showing a balance of twenty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. What does that indicate? Is that people unpaid or...
Which column are you looking at? The balance uncollected?
Earned income tax delinquent.
Right. But which column?
Balance uncollected.
Okay, based on the thirty thousand that was budgeted, we've only received the four thousand so far.
How do we get the balance so far?
Well, that is something that the tax collector would have estimated that we would still receive for delinquent taxes from last year. So, now it's not probably would have gave that number to either Rick or Alex.
Does the solicitor know how we collect them?
Yeah, that's paid, you know, through the rest of the year. We don't collect that all first quarter.
And as time allows, the tax department pursues and tries to, if you will, track down money.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Just to know, as of January one and forward, Berchheimer, as part of the county collection system, will be taking care of those on the earned income. But we are responsible, our department is, for anything prior to January one, two thousand and twelve.
Is that what twenty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars raised?
Yes, that's just not for delinquents from two thousand and eleven. They may date back to two thousand nine, seven, eight, you know, several years.
All right.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor approving this reports?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number six citizens request. Anybody wish to speak? Five minutes? Maybe three? Jimmy gets three? You still want to get three, Jimmy? You're gonna work up to five in here. I'll cut you back. Anybody else? No? Okay. All right, community reports. No Marty here? Harvey? No? All right. Board and authority reports. Chief, the board?
Two things. We just obtained a grant from the Chief of Police Association to install CPEN and LiveScan. What those are is new photograph and fingerprinting. The photograph and fingerprinting will not be an online procedure. It'll go straight to a central repository. There will be no more ink prints. They'll all be done by a computer. It'll go online. We'll get responses back within six minutes for any kind of wanted person, warrants, things like that. Other departments will also access and use this. It will be up and running within ninety days. Also, I'm working right now on getting a new camera security system throughout the building. We'll also have a camera on top of the building which will be focused on Main Street, two-hundred block of Main Street, and Rogers Park. So those are the two things that I'm working on right now.
Sounds good.
If you have any questions or want to see the specs on the LiveScan or the CPEN, I have all the information. It's available.
Okay, thank you. John?
I just have a couple of things, just to let council and you, Madam Mayor, know. Fire Department is upgrading their communication system due to the regulations in the Federal Communications Commission. By the end of the year, we have to upgrade to a narrow-banded system. And to just let the people of the town, the citizens, know that this will not come at any cost to the taxpayers or come out of the city budget. Fire Department will be absorbing all costs for this at approximately eighty-four thousand dollars. And we have to do this due to state regulations to keep our own dispatching and our system up to the code. So, just to let you know that we're doing that. We're in the process right now. Should be started here in a little while to upgrade our system. The other thing is, Company Two downstairs also will have a new rescue truck coming in. Again, there is no cost to the city or to the taxpayers, and they purchased that truck and they're gonna make payments. They got a P-MO loan, and they can pay that back. And there's a, at the cost of two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand approximately. So, we're moving on, but I just wanted to let the taxpayers know that there is no debt to them or to the city out of the city budget.
Is Joe there? Here? Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of council, items for action are as follows. Under the Public Works Department's, the first item is a resolution, and the title of the resolution is authorizing a second extension of municipal waste disposal service contract between the City of Latrobe and Green Ridge Waste Services LLC. And the preamble is essentially recite that we have already extended our contract with Green Ridge Waste Services from January thirty-one, two thousand and twelve, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. And the resolution now seeks to extend it further to September thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. Now therefore be resolved, section one, that the Council of the City of Latrobe is hereby authorized and proved entering into a second amendment to the above-described municipal waste disposal service contract, which amendment extends the provisions of the contract through September thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. The amendment further provides that all of the provisions of the contract shall remain unchanged and in full force and effective. Section two, the mayor, city manager, city secretary, director of public works, and any other proper city officer are hereby authorized to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect the provisions of this resolution, resolved in council of the state and attached his amendment to the contract to be signed by all parties. The motion will be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
Now have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move we adopt the resolution as read by the solicitor or to be read.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Jaylen Angelo. Any questions or discussion? Big bar. This is Resolution two thousand and twelve, twenty-nine. Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jim and Angela?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Thirty-six, yes. Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item on the agenda is also a resolution. It is entitled approving the purchase of de-icing salt by the City of Latrobe from the Indiana Westmoreland Council of Governments. Now therefore be resolved, section one, that the City of Latrobe is hereby approved, purchase of de-icing salt from the Indiana Westmoreland Council of Governments at the price of sixty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents per ton delivered from Cargill Inc. in such quantity as the city may require. Section two, the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution resolved in council of the state. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Jim and Angela, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scupora? Any questions or discussion? Okay. This is Resolution two thousand and twelve, thirty. Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jim and Angela?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Thirty-six, yes. Motion carried.
Madam Mayor and members of council, the next item is simply a motion, and the motion reads as follows: I move we authorize the city manager or his designee to advertise the seat bids for the two thousand and twelve street paving program.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Scupora, second?
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
Wolford, any questions or discussion? Okay, we have a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we're now in the Planning and Development Department, and the first item is a resolution. The resolution is entitled adopting a policy to establish tobacco-free parks and recreation areas. And I will read some of the recitals, whereas secondhand smoke is responsible for over fifty thousand deaths among non-smokers, and whereas tobacco kills more Americans each year than alcohol, cocaine, heroin, homicide, suicide, accident, fire, and AIDS combined, and whereas eighty percent of smokers started smoking before the age of eighteen, and the average initiation age is twelve years old, whereas every day an estimated three thousand nine hundred young people under the age of eighteen try their first cigarette, and one-third of these children will die prematurely from tobacco-related illnesses, and whereas the city desires to help role model non-smoking behavior to children and youth, and to provide children, youth, and their families with a safe, smoke-free environment, now therefore be resolved, section one, that the following areas which are parks and playgrounds within the City of Latrobe where children are present shall be designated as tobacco-free. And the list includes Legion Keener Park, the athletic field, third word playground, first word playground, and ball fields, six-word playground. Section two, that appropriate signs shall be posted to designate the tobacco-free areas. Section three, the residents of the city shall be notified of this resolution, and the designation of the tobacco-free zones is stated herein. Section four, that any person in violation of this resolution shall be asked to comply with the resolution and may upon subsequent warnings be requested to remove himself or herself from the playground area. Section five, that the council hereby encourages and selected and appointed officials to make periodic observations of the tobacco-free areas to monitor compliance and promote awareness of this resolution, resolved in council of the state. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as read by the solicitor.
Motion, may I have a motion?
We don't have a six-word playground anymore, are we?
No, we don't. We still have...
Well, I'm thinking of the one where the sled riding is. Isn't that in the six-word?
Down there Kramer Heights.
Yeah, down there Kramer Heights. I think we still have that still part of it. No, you're right. We don't have the one.
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Wolford, may I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Jim and Angela, any questions or discussion?
Did I hear you say that the first offense is not actionable?
There is, there is no fine set forth in the resolution. The fine is based upon, for the, I guess I would say, Mr. Jim, the sanction would be that persons who are violating would be first asked to stop. If they're not asked to stop, then they're going to be asked to leave the area. But there's no monetary fine or anything at this point. If people don't comply, we can do something later on.
Does that include the city hall and its environment?
No, these are just, the playground areas where children, not park and recreations.
Playground areas that the city owns or the...
The request is coming from the park and ground commission, so it would be the parks within the city limits that they're requesting.
Any park owned by us or operated by the park and ground commission within the city zone?
If I'm not mistaken, there's no smoke in this building as there is. I think they all go outside, but they know of the smoke.
Right.
They don't do it over at the hospital. They go across the street.
It's no damn difference. Smoke-free zone.
So you went outside and there was smoke outside, had to cross over to the next corner to the post office, to Ross and B. Philly Court?
I don't know. That's what they do at the hospital. I just...
This ain't the hospital.
Pardon?
This is not the hospital.
I agree with you.
They have their own rules over there. We have our own rules. Don't even bring that up into here.
You don't want me to bring it up?
There's no sense to it.
It's just a comparison, that's all. And under that smoke-free order, are you allowed to smoke in your car when the window's closed?
We haven't said anything over the other. I mean, obviously, if the car is parked in an area...
What I read here, if I could, what I read here is that the appropriate signs shall be posted to designate the tobacco-free areas. And what was part of the planning session here was that they will put signs up to the areas that this effect, it doesn't, it didn't necessarily affect a hundred percent of being displayed.
Yeah, the idea was that it would be posted at or near the swings, the ball fields, and those things. Not necessarily at the parking lots and or at the entrances to the parking areas. The idea, again, is you got kids at the sliding board or wherever, or playing, yeah. So the stands, the field, those areas would be appropriately signed.
It'd be safe to say that this is really in the beginning stage to encourage.
I think the idea, we had a meeting, we had a meeting, a couple of meetings with some residents from some of the playgrounds, and some of the parents of the smaller kids, you know, they'll go to the playground. If there's teenagers over there that are not, you know, not behaving like they should be in a playground, this way it gives them something to go, to address as a parent, saying, "Look, you can't be smoking here," you know, and it helps them, kind of as a community, neighborhood, police, police the parks, all of us. If I'm at the playground with my soon-to-be grandchild, somebody's smoking, I, you know, I have an avenue to say, "You can't smoke here. You're not allowed." And, you know, if you end up having to call the police, if the kids don't listen, that's a different story. We'll address that as the time comes. But I think the idea is just to start with some kind of, you know, a program that basically says, "We're not allowed to do this."
As it goes, we're one of the last communities to jump on that bandwagon. Everywhere else, they all have it, all their ball fields, hearing this is a smoke-free zone, at their ball fields, at their playgrounds and everything. And Lake Hurst is one of the last ones to jump on this. We should have been on this years ago. And it's a good thing, designated areas.
Anybody else? This is Resolution two thousand and twelve, thirty-one. Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mr. Jim and Angela?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Thirty-six, yes. Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item is also a resolution, and it's entitled ratifying the actions of the city manager and authorizing an application for a grant for implementation of the comprehensive plan and sustainability programs. Whereas the city desires to undertake a project to implement various aspects of its comprehensive plan and to develop sustainability programs in order to restore and enhance community development and expand current community revitalization efforts. And whereas the city manager has submitted an application to the Community Foundation of Westmoreland County for a twenty-five-thousand-dollar grant to assist the city's current efforts in this regard, now therefore be resolved, section one, that the Council of the City of Latrobe is hereby authorized the seeking of a twenty-five-thousand-dollar grant from the Community Foundation of Westmoreland County and further ratifies the actions of the city manager in submitting a written grant application to the foundation for approval. Section two, that the City of Latrobe will allocate local resources and has committed fifty-five thousand dollars from the two thousand and twelve budget to match the requested grant. Section three, city manager, secretary, mayor, and any other proper officer are hereby authorized and directed to take any and all action and to sign any and all documents necessary to seek award on the receipt of the twenty-five-thousand-dollar grant from the Community Foundation of Westmoreland County and to carry into effect this resolution, resolved in council of the state. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as read by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Scupora, second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forrest? Any questions or discussion? Questions, discussion? Big bar? This is Resolution two thousand and twelve, thirty-two. Mr. Jim and Angela?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Thirty-six, yes. Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item also appears under the Administration of Finance Department, and it's simply a motion, and it reads, "I move we approve the contribution of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars in the general fund to the Latrobe Foundation for the support of the mini-garden project throughout the city."
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Wolford, second? Mr. Any question, discussion? All in favor? Okay, opposed?
No, I'm sorry. All in favor, aye.
Fine, okay. All right. Motion carried.
Just would like to note, thanks to council for that. Real quick, they take care of our flowers up front, and they save us from having to do that. And they do a beautiful job. The entryways facing Jefferson are maintained by them, so that's a good example for us to do that. Appreciate the support for that.
We don't have to do that out. Does that mean you'd be out there doing it? I'm thinking we can take some one here.
We thought they'd be councilmen. Especially stuffy.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item also appears under the Administration of Finance Department. It's a resolution entitled approving agreement with Campbell, Durant, Beatty, Plumb, Miller, PC for collective bargaining matters with all tips of the Latrobe Police Department. Whereas the City of Latrobe will be entering into negotiations with the collective bargaining unit for the Latrobe Police Department for a new legal contract, and whereas the city desires to obtain legal services from Campbell, Durant, Beatty, Plumb, Miller, PC for matters pertaining to the negotiations of said contract and/or interest arbitration, now therefore be resolved, section one, the Council of the City of Latrobe is hereby approved engaging the law firm of Campbell, Durant, Beatty, Plumb, Miller, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, to provide legal services for negotiation of the collective bargaining agreement, the Latrobe Police Department, and/or interest arbitration flowing therefrom. Section two, that the Council of the City of Latrobe is hereby approved, the fee structure to be charged by the law firm is set forth on engagement letter attached as Exhibit A. And section three, that the Council of the City of Latrobe hereby authorizes the city manager, city secretary, and the mayor, and any other proper city officer to sign any and all documents necessary and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect the provisions of the within resolution, resolved in council of the state. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
Did you get the packet of motions? There's a separate motion packet.
We need a bigger desk.
I don't, I didn't miss the meeting, but did you come to that meeting?
Mike and Ken were there.
Ken were there. I could have had a conflict. Mike can tell you about him. I think it's somebody you guys met up in State College, right?
We met him at the Pelrose Seminar, yes. Alex, I met him.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Jim and Angela, second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Scupora, any questions or discussion?
Mr. Know this firm?
No, you don't.
They are a public sector legal advising firm for all matters involving public sector employment issues.
They're a public sector legal advising firm used throughout the state for all matters dealing with public sector employment issues. And they come well recommended and very with a lot of feathers in their cap.
Have we been kind of amount that we would go up to for this?
We have not. The idea that we discussed is that the manager with council will be negotiating with representatives of the FOP and on an as-needed basis, you know, use their time. But if we do it right, we won't be using them as much as is needed. And because of their expertise, you know, an hour of their time is a lot, is a lot of effort, is a lot of material or questions answered, you know. So when we do engage them, their efficiency in delivering the material and the quality of it will be worth the money.
Yeah, they won't be engaged throughout the whole negotiation process and may not even need it. We don't know that. But we're just saying we would like to use them if we need them throughout the process. And we're only gonna pay for them if we use them for any part of that process.
Any other discussion, question?
On your contract negotiations, you guys, we're just holding on to daytime hours, between seven and three o'clock.
If you'd like, we can accommodate another time, you know. I generally been doing it shift changes because it's hard to get the officers, you know, necessarily at the same time. Plus, I don't want to tie 'em up, if you can imagine, you know. So, I've been doing a lot of two-thirty or three-thirty because then they're coming in or coming out. I'll grab one from the afternoon, one from the day, so that you're not coming off the same shift. But it wouldn't, there's nothing that prevents us from having an evening meeting and asking one of them to come in another time.
Anyone else? Okay, bar. This is Resolution two thousand and twelve, thirty-three. Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jim and Angela?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Thirty-six, yes. Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item appears under the Police Department. It's a resolution entitled authorizing entering into a contract with Allstate Tower, Inc. for inspection report on St. Mary's Cemetery Tower. Whereas the City of Latrobe has for a significant number of years leased property from St. Mary's Cemetery for the erection of a radio transmitter tower. Whereas the city now desires to have an independent contractor inspect the tower and provide a report to the city for the condition of and the continued necessity and/or function of the tower, now therefore be resolved, section one, that the Council of the City of Latrobe hereby approves a contract with Allstate Tower, Inc. in the form attached here to Exhibit A, in order to inspect and provide the written report of the condition of the tower and its continued necessity and/or function at a contract price not to exceed nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars. In section two, that the mayor, city manager, secretary, and any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution resolved in council of the state. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined. the motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Scapora, second?
I'll second the motion.
And Mr. Jim, any question or discussion?
I'm sorry, he was the first. Mr. Scapora, thank you.
Did we do this before?
No, we've not. Currently, the tower is, I don't think has any equipment on it. The fire company uses the water tower, but we still have to, if you will, we're responsible for it, we're liable for it, we have to keep registering with the FCC, and to be honest with you, I want to either fish or cut bait, and this inspection will either determine its usefulness, is it marketable, possibly a self, the tower company might be interested in leasing off of us, and we might be able to make some money off it, or we might determine it's just not worth being responsible for any longer and abandon it appropriately in a safe way.
But this is needed to give us that information?
Correct. My hope, quite frankly, is to try to find ways to diversify the revenue for the city and trying to turn over every rock, and one of the rocks is we got a tower sitting up there that doesn't do anything for us, and there may be a possibility that it might have a value to the market.
Anyone else? No, anybody else have a question or discussion on this?
This is resolution 2012-34. Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
That is six, yes.
Motion care.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Mr. Graziani reminded me, I skipped an item, which is item three under Administration and Finance Department, and that is Pango customer dispute and cancellation policy. We did talk about taking this off of the agenda because I'm not so sure that's anything we need to get involved in at the moment, they have to draft whatever policy they deem appropriate, and we'll redo it and take it from there. So I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that to you, that we just pulled that off of the agenda.
The idea was that the agreement is between them and their customer, and when the customer agrees to be a member, they agree to that policy. So, you know, it wasn't appropriate to have it before this group.
Do we need to modify the agenda?
No, we just crossed it off.
Fortunately, the charter says you only have to amend the agenda to add things. Madam Mayor, members of council, there is one more item, and it does come under unfinished business, and that is a resolution for an appointment to the zoning hearing board, and the resolution reads that James R. Miller, being is hereby appointed as a member of the Latrobe Zoning Hearing Board to fill the unexpired term of Joseph Lee Ash, set term to expire January 31, 2013, resolved in council of the state, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as read by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Jivinangelo, second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forish, any questions or discussion?
This is resolution 2012-35. Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
That is six, yes.
Motion care.
Madam Mayor, members of council, that pretty much concludes the action items. There is something, though, I did want to ask council. At our prior agenda session, I think maybe one or two ago, Mr. Baldinger came up to me and asked me to look into a mutual aid agreement with neighboring communities that we have not already entered into one. Right now, we are involved, we have a mutual aid agreement with Derry Township and with the city of Greensburg, and I did look into it, and those are the only two. I believe he feels, and I concur, that they're going to be building an emergency operations center up at the airport, and that by being involved in mutual aid agreements with different communities, I mean, it's beneficial to everybody. So my question to council is, unless I hear an objection, I'm going to go ahead and prepare some agreements patterned after the ones we have with Derry and Greensburg, they're pretty much the same, and send a letter to the various solicitors of Unity Township, Derry Borough, Living Near Borough, Living Near Township, and Youngstown Borough, to ask their solicitors to present this matter to their governing body to see if they're interested in joining into a mutual aid agreement with us. I will send copies of my communications then to the various solicitors and the agreements.
I would also include him, Phil Township, in that.
Any other? Any other new business? Alex?
John.
John?
I just have a couple things for the citizens. Just a reminder that the recycling bin for the cans has been relocated down to 390 Oak Street at Host Company One, down there by Uber Hall, to create some more parking areas out here, so it's been down there. There was a piece of the paper, so just to let everybody know, just a reminder that if you're looking for it, that's where it's at, you still drop your cans down there.
My manager's report is before you. I would like to note, especially since we did make the appointment for the zoning hearing board, we do have a vacancy that remains on the Civil Service Commission. It's vital that someone in our community step forward and volunteer their services to serve on the Civil Service Commission. It's needed right now because we need to administer a test to our police officers, can only be done by the Civil Service Commission, and it quite frankly is, would be very helpful for us to have that full complement with the commission to be able to move forward with that. Just do want to commend Chief Boomer with the central booking, I'm glad to hear that we're moving forward on the fact we got the grants, and has prepared for the council to look at the maps related to the alleys. In the June meeting, you'll be looking at adopting the ordinance, about nine miles of alleys are being added to our system, we have about 35 miles of public road, so it's significant in the number of alleys. And if you're curious to look at the names of those alleys, she's done a wonderful job, a lot of hours spent getting that ready. And again, the closing for the fire truck is going to be the first week in June, I believe, so in time for the, not that it's the first ward company, but they'll be doing their street, or maybe we'll get it over there to take a look at it. But other than that, I have prepared a detailed spreadsheet for the council as it relates to the parking garage. I would welcome council, if you would like to go over it in detail at your convenience, I'll go to your place of work or however you'd like to be able to review this, but it pretty much gives you a snapshot from a detailed perspective related to the finances, the cost of the garage, the change orders, the items related to the subcontractor costs for electrical, mechanical, and plumbing, and then finally the bills paid to date. So it gives you an idea of an accounting where we're at, and I think it's important that, you know, if you have questions, that I'd be available for that. But other than that, the report as it stands, we are working on a new website, and I think I forwarded a link to council for the beta site, would appreciate comments back on that, and any ideas that you have related to that. So, does any council members have any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, before we get any further, have we proceeded any farther along with the Red Crossings, as Mr. Baldinari asked to?
Man, I thought you were off the hook as Kenny wasn't here. I thought you were off, but he must have sent you an email, didn't he?
As I told Mr. Baldinari last night, I am very mindful, that's for limitations, and then they will run, and it's not going to run for quite a while. I will have it for him, I just can't give him the date, and it won't be here, he's turning around in the late.
All right. First, I'd like to thank Jim for volunteering to be on, we need you, and hopefully we'll get somebody for civil service. I volunteer, but I don't think I'm permitted, so, I didn't think so. Somebody else has to volunteer. Okay, first Ward Fireman's, the fair is going to be June 4th to the 9th, so it's always a good place to go. Rosie, maybe, you know, we weren't sure of the date for the, our school community picnic this year. I'm not sure what the date is. Do you think June 3rd?
I think it's the second Tuesday. Or is it Wednesday? Those two days.
It's usually, it used to always be a Tuesday.
The 4th is a Monday, the 5th is a Tuesday, so it's probably the 12th, but I don't know for sure.
So, we'll make an announcement at the, at the meeting. I send you. I want to, Anne, I want to make mention of something for Anne Powell. It's, a notice took Anne, it says, "We are pleased to inform you that one of your staff," excuse me, I called wrong, "Anne Powell has successfully completed the process and examination to become an ASFPM," that's nice, "certified floodplain manager. The grants and certification only to those professionals who meet the requirements and complete a comprehensive examination on the programs and standards to reduce flood losses in the nation." So, congratulate Anne. You know, she had to go to class, take tests, and all those good things, so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Anne. I'll be out commissioned for a little bit, I have to have knee surgery, so, maybe think about me, please, and pray you do. So I'm having that surgery next Monday, and then Mr. Baldinari can take care of maybe a meeting or two. He won't mind.
Have him help us all.
You'll be too far away to.
I have my ball.
You have your ball, so.
Put it in my desk.
We have to keep, you know, yeah, okay, throw that, okay. Anybody else want to, you have to mention? Great, thank you, and I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second. I'll second.
All right, thank you, oh, okay, thank you, motion care. Meeting adjourned.